This time I'm calling the regular council meeting, little nothing member of order. I rise at this time. I have our indication, so come forward to follow up please and please.
You will us of our hearts for word, Mayor. Honesty God, we thank Heavenly Father for the opportunity to be out tonight and those that are gathered here tonight to do the town's business. And we assess that you give the town council the wisdom of Solomon to lead our little town the way that you'd have us to do so. And we just thank you for the offer of being honored later on tonight. We thank you and we praise you in Christ holy name. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sean, thank you. We are now in our agenda to edit the business. Not only agenda, does any council member wish to edit anything at this time?
Mayor, I'd like to add, housing board continuation, if possible, on the agenda conversation.
Can we put that under new business? Anything else? Here now is our motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
For a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
For the side. We've received the minutes for the October regular council meeting and the reconvene meeting on 10/25. Everyone had a chance to review those minutes. We have a motion to approve the amendments as presented.
So good.
For a second.
All seven, Mayor.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. We have received council table and bills for October. Mr. Short, do you have any additions to this?
I do not have any additions. I did have a comment for on the check register for Oscar design, $20,000. That was approved about three months ago. The check was lost in the mail, so they're stopped paying on one check, and that's recent now.
Recent, okay. Mr. Young, do you have any?
No additions, Mayor. There's no other additions. I'll move to approve the October council table presented.
For a second. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those say side. With that to the part of our agenda, we're getting ready to recognize one of our own. And we, this time, I'm going to ask Chief Diskus to come forward. For a presentation.
Mayor and council members, each year the Mothers Against Drug Drivers hold a ceremony and they award officers with across the state for their number of impaired drivers that they've arrested and convicted throughout the year. But also for different areas of work throughout, things they've done through different trainings, different presentations, anything that is put into getting impaired drivers off the road, they look into that. It's an award that's pretty prestigious throughout officers over the state. They have to be nominated, submitted, and reviewed to receive the award. And it's, let me place the woman's honor to recognize Officer Michael Ward was presented this award by the Mothers Against Drug Driver for the Year 2021. Yeah, so they'll take a picture with you here for the paper.
Good. Let's all get a rev. I think we're gonna have, I think we're gonna have a family up here. Come on up here. Congratulations, man. Good job. Chief, get on here. Well, I'm saying I'm good. There we go. Thank you. Congratulations. Our pleasure.
Congratulations, Sergeant. Thank you. Appreciate it.
So ladies, a good opportunity to celebrate our, congratulations again.
Thanks, Sergeant. Very appreciate what you do.
Public question, Mr. Kelly McFry. I believe our info was in the packet. Is this about the music, I think?
Yes, I'm wearing my Rotary hat and my part of athletic orchestra hat, if you can't tell.
Okay.
Kelly's having a hard time talking this evening. She's got a very backhold, so I told her I was standing there, but I'm Sarah Adams. We're both in Rotary. I am also an orchestra. Kelly's, she helps out in orchestra as well. But we have a vision of adding a musical instrument, an outdoor musical instrument, to one of our town parks. And we've got some money already donated, and we are in the process of trying to figure out some fundraising. And we would like to get the town's approval to do that, if you would like for us to do that. And basically what we need today is some kind of a yes or no that you would be in agreement to that. And possibly some thoughts on where you might like to have that, whether it's here at the park, here behind the swimming pool, or at J.S. Easterly Park. But it would be, if you've been to Dollywood or Walt Disney, you've probably seen the big musical instruments that kids can play on and have a lot of resonation. They're very, very interesting little instruments that kids can learn and appreciate music. And we are partnering with the, and dogs, if the dog wants it. We're partnering with the orchestra because orchestra is a 501(c)(3) organization, so any charitable contributions that come in for fundraising are tax deductible. And what we're proposing to do is we are, we work with a company, or working with a company, that has bricks that we can sell. And people can say in memory of or in honor of, and these bricks would be either pavers or a wall behind the instrument. And we can do different sizes, so if an organization like the band wants to recognize the class of 2023 and wants to put various senior names or something, it could be a bigger brick. Or if you have a family that wants to put many family members, so we're, that's the kind of where we want to go with this. We're not asking for the town for any money, although to the point we're ready to do some installation if we can use town labels. Particularly maybe to do installation, how play brick and install it, that might be nice to have. But we are going to try to raise all the money for the actual instrument, the bricks, and concrete, whatever it takes to install it.
How big an instrument do you envision here? What are y'all thinking?
They vary in size. I mean, like, there's, you can get flowers that are in tune, and they are in tune. You know, like, you get a little flower that say, you can get three, that like, one this size, one this size, and one this size. And you have a mallet and you play the pedals and it's in this key of C, so it's.
I can't, I can't see, yeah.
But it can be, but it can be in a little xylophone, or it can be vertical, which you. Depending on what size space you want to allocate to it, we can probably find an instrument that works. Or if you're, if it's just, you're okay with whatever size, you know, within a certain dimension, we'd probably like to go as large as possible, but it would be limited to the amount of funds that we can raise. And we are going to do this across the county, so we're topping the home acre to do installation there and probably one in the other end of the county toward Castlewood, and we're like, I'd like to do that. It's a community enhancement.
Very good.
I mean, obviously, if we can get the money, we can put in more than one. But it would become a sort of thing that, it would be unique, so that like, you could take your kids here in town regularly, but you know, on a Sunday afternoon, you go to Castlewood and there'll be different instruments they can play with. And if we can afford to put two in, you'll let us. The only reason for wanting to know particularly where it's going to go is the brick company will actually create a website. They've got a template that you can do. And we can give them a bank account number, and like, you can go in and buy one, you know, to honor your band director if you were in band, you know, or your sister was in band. You can go in on the website, pay your money, buy your brick, and because, and knowing where it is, you can say, I want my letter. Or, you know, like, you're going to buy one for your brothers and sisters or your grandkids. You can select them so that they're all three together. So that's the only reason why we really would like to know where it's going to go soon, because that'll like, you know, make it possible for people to do that.
What you were asking is, is support or resolution from the town?
A resolution from the town, a location where you would like for it to be, because we don't want to, we don't want to be the ones to pick. You all can think about, we don't have to have an answer today, but it'd be nice to have an answer maybe by the next town council meeting.
It was a man who was childproof, you know, how hard are they to tear up?
No, they're pretty childproof, yeah.
They're durable. They're, they're steel, aluminum.
I can't say that if a kid comes in with a sledgehammer and tries to demolish it, that it wouldn't be demolishable, but hopefully.
I'll be able to help you.
Kelly, didn't you bring that? At one time, this, there was a magazine or a catalog.
Without the bricks, but yeah, there is a website.
And I do have a catalog from, it's called Free Notes Harmony Park. And you can literally go on and like, listen to recordings, so you can see, they're not loud. I mean, it's not going to be, if it's close to a house, it's not likely to be disturbing the night, for instance.
If you've got this in your packet, there's a website address, a couple of different ones there, that if you want to go in.
No, but we'd like to start doing our fundraising in January, so, you know, being able to know where it's going to go, buy like, say, the first of January, so we can. Because we've gotten some money from Rotary, and Rotary's committed to, to this project. And we think we can get a regional district Rotary grant that will match. So, you know, we're thinking come summer, we might be able to have an installation, certainly by the end of summer.
I'd like to. I think your point is, we probably need to discuss this in our December meeting. And Drew, we probably need Shane involved in this, and Miss Deanna may want to call a parks meeting between then and December to discuss it. But we'll, let's shoot toward December to give you all the answer for the first of year. How big, how big a territory are you talking?
How big of a territory, like, where we live?
For the brick and all that, how big of area is it?
Well, I, you know, I would think, I don't know, eight by eight, maybe?
I mean, the, the square foot of an individual instrument isn't much bigger than this. Like, one of the flowers or the ones that frankly to me look like evergreens, color, color, colorful, if you get that out. But like, the ones that are more like xylophones are going to be rectangle, not more than like, three by four feet. And how much we break around it, or how we do a rectangle, depends where y'all want to put it.
And we thought too, maybe a sitting bench for the parents, and no longer. All that could be done with brick, that we raise brick, or.
Thank you all for being here. Good, we're going to move on to any other, Diane, you have any other favor to press this time? You need to sign up if you want to speak.
Hey, get here. I don't want to walk across in front of you.
You're wearing stuff. Let's get 18. Brad's giving him six clocks.
Yes.
Your wife is supporting that.
I know how it is.
Listen, Lou, what we've been thinking about, you know, I always come here talking about the kids, something to do for the kids and that. And I'm coming at y'all this time, I'm not asking for money. We're wanting to get something started about once a month to start out with, where we will show a kids movie. And we want to get it where we can tag the kids, mom and dad can come in and drop them off, and leave, go to Walmart or whatever, and come back and get to the kids. We'll show the kids movies and stuff. I figure if we start talking about this big, when they get this big, they might listen to what we got to say. They're not going to listen to mom and dad, but they might listen to what we got to say about drugs and stuff. Also, I want to incorporate, I spoke to Chief just a little bit about it, is incorporate the bracelet to it. That way, they get to know, hey, these ain't the bad guys. If there's a problem, I can go see, I can go see Mr. Destons, because he's my friend. You know, just how the work is about, I want to get to church, but I don't want to go through y'all before I went to the churches and try to tie it, because it's going to cost. I want the churches groups over it. I mean, if they, I have a reasonable problem. The only thing we would need is a place to do it once a month, be it back here or downtown. That'd be only, it wouldn't be a cost, it just wouldn't be a big pain for it, if you'd like a free room to do this in.
Keep working out the details, get back to us.
All right, that's something that we should pursue. Short a second.
It's in your heart, Randy, pursue it.
I've got a couple of names going for kids, one with the supervisors, and one with y'all.
Thank you, Randy. Under our new business, Mr. Taylor, I have you, you wish to discuss the Cumberland Airport Commission?
Yeah, apparently, the airport over Wise, that was set up in 1958 as the Cumberland, Cumberland's Airport Commission. And the enabling legislation said that the participating governing bodies were Wise County, Dixon County, Lee County, Russell County, City in Norton, Towns of Apewatch, and Big Stone, Wise Town, Cobham, St. Paul, Greenwood, Haystack, Jones, Wapenee, Gap, Union, Rose Hill, and Leaven. Now, to my knowledge, the Town of Leaven has never participated in that commission. It is an existing commission. They meet regularly, they have a website, they have amendments, they basically administer the airport, any lumps and pound airport over Wise. Apparently, it came, I talked with their lawyer when Diane sent me this, and apparently it came to their attention that their enabling legislation had all these different localities listed as, as participants. But the only ones that have ever participated, I think, are Wise, Norton, Dixon County, and I don't know who else, if any, maybe the Town of Wise Town, I'm not, I'm not sure. Anyway, the Wise County had, was going to ask the General Assembly to amend that legislation, to just say that the commission would consist of the governing bodies that actually sent members to this commission and participated in its activity. They, you know, they pay so much money for its operation and so forth. And their lawyer, the commission's lawyer, told them, said, well, if we're going to remove these bodies, we need to see if they want to participate a lot, because most of them probably don't know that they're entitled to it.
Does it cost the law of this commission?
I think you have to pay so much, yeah. You, you basically, they generate revenue, and then I think there's money that's paid to cover their operating expenses.
But we don't know what that is, though.
No. And I told him, I said, well, I would, I would sit in the way that the council made, I, I don't know that, since nobody, since you haven't participated since 1958, I wouldn't think that there'd be much reason to.
Do you need us to act on either one or two on this second page?
Yeah, and I'll let him know if y'all want to participate, or if you don't want to participate.
We have participated since when?
1958. That's almost as though as you were.
What's council's pleasure? If we haven't been participating, and there's fees, and money awarded to it, I don't know that we need to belong to it. If we haven't belonged to it for that 67 years, so what's your pleasure there, council?
May I make a motion to not participate, not continue to be a member of the Cumberland's Airport Commission? Would like to request a roll call vote.
Roll call vote. We need a second. We need a second.
So we, so we are a member now?
You're entitled to be a member.
You're entitled to be a member.
You're entitled to be a member now.
So says, do not continue, like.
My knowledge, nobody, you've ever, to my knowledge, you have never nominated, sent members, nominated members to their board, their commission.
So that's the case, we'd also not plan to.
True, that's correct, yeah.
Being true. Okay. Motion to second, it's on the floor, Miss Deanna. Roll call vote, Mr. Leonard.
My voting, yes.
In favor of the motion or against it?
I'm in favor of the motion.
Favor of the motion is to withdraw.
Yes.
I'm in favor.
Brad?
Yes.
Mary? Deanna?
Yes.
Dog?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
If you can fill that out, or do you need to sign that, Kevin, or is?
If Diane wants to, I can send it to their lawyer, or I can email him, or whatever, I can, but.
All right.
You want to, well, if Drew wants, I guess it's addressed to Drew, so if he wants to, just give it back to me.
Just fill in the blanks there. Miss Diane, Drew, you sign it, and send it, please.
And I'll notify. Which I mean, I thought it was, it was.
Y'all are the same page.
I wanted them to ask you before they kick you out.
If it hadn't been benefited us in 67 years.
Some way, you know, you never want to know.
That's correct. Thank you, Kevin. Okay, next item is Secret Fest 2023, at your seats, or should be, you all gave me entertainers to solicit availability and dates. Diane, hit me. Right now, we have on Bluegrass on Friday is Just Us, is that correct? Simply Us. And then on Saturday, we have, what's it?
Torn Rhythms.
Torn Rhythms. And we have another local band, I believe they're called From the Edge. It's a, a local of grass or contemporary.
They're like, um, rock and country.
They were down at the Trump thing.
So they're rock and country. That'd be Saturday.
Yeah.
So there's two of the four. We tried to, I think, Scott, that band that you did ask us about is either, they're not together now, or they're not playing now. I can't remember the name of it. Something Brown, is that correct?
I don't recall. But I did.
Okay. So, we talked about Marty Stewart, it's the headliner for Friday, the June 9th. He is available, John Langston is available for Saturday. Shenandoah is available. Shannon Della. Twenty, no, I just got one, but they're not available for the whole night. Many great, their band, from, from, from June through the middle of July.
When is Shenandoah, Friday?
They're ready, either day.
And what's their rate?
Twenty-two-five. Langston. The, you see the figures there for Holly Williams, Tyler, Mark Chestnut, Chase Matthew, Corey Smith, Ben Hager, and Greg Quay. So we've got two, we have two for Saturday right now. One of the others that we've already agreed to, and I think is confirmed, is the On the Border. So if we're, we just need to find the headliner for Saturday.
Would you recommend John Langston or Shenandoah, Mayor, for Saturday night?
Right now, I'd, I'd recommend John Langston. He's really, he's across the, he's got a lot of following and different, at all ages, Scott. It's not just the, the young people. I mean, he's a, he could very well be one of those where we get, like, Parmley came into town last year, number one record, he's on the same track.
What's the, I mean, what, what kind of music is this?
Country.
Country.
Country, mother of country.
Elijah, is this Corey Smith, is that the name that you recommended?
I like Corey Smith.
Yeah, I'm thinking maybe like, John Langston, Corey Smith on the border lineup, and with local, with local artists ahead of them. One or two. For Saturday night, of course.
That'd be good, John, John Langston and Corey. Everybody good with John Langston and Corey Smith for Saturday, the 10th?
And you're going to continue to negotiate pricing?
Oh, yeah.
See, there's a range on here.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Sounds good to me, Mayor.
You okay, Deanna?
I'm okay. I don't know any album.
Yeah, but you love music, because you sit right there and be listeners. Dog, you good?
I'm good.
Scott, you good moving forward? Bradley? Mary? Elijah?
Yes, sir.
Right now, let's talk about Friday night. We've got the headliner, we got Simply Us. I don't know if it would matter, I, I don't know that it would matter, you remember last year? We had more of a rock and country Saturday, but, but what's the, the Fedler, what's his name, the boy, the Carson Peters? He played on that stage. So why couldn't we do this local, maybe get the local effort from, from the Edge group for Friday to add to Simply Us? And their range is eight, eight hundred to 1,200.
Do we have Simply Us already in line?
We do.
Put a price on that.
It's like nine fifty, nine fifty or thousand, somewhere in there.
When you're back from the first supply?
Have you contacted the first supply?
They're not, we called, they're not, they're touring somewhere else. See, this is why, I mean, right now, it's important, because they're up, they started in October booking. So we're, right now, it's crucial that we come to a decision tonight to get who we want. That's the, Torn Rhythms is 400, is that right, Diane? For Saturday, I believe you told me the same price we paid last year, the local group.
So, backing up, headliner for Friday night?
Yeah, this is Marty Stewart. From the Edge is on Friday night? I'd like to, I mean, I'd like to. I'd like to, I mean, I'd like to, I'm good with that, it's a local band, we can find out, you know? We're trying to promote our local folks too, as well, you know? They contact with us, I understand, they're very interested in the festival, Simply Us.
Are you saying from Saturday, from the Edge, you said someone will change that to Friday?
Well, that's what I'm saying, what Scott, what Scott's saying, we want to do, let's say we do John Langston, Corey Smith, and on the border, and Torn Rhythms, there's four, there's four, the four we usually have slots for Saturday. And we've been holding four slots on Friday, so we've got Simply Us, From the Edge, and Marty Stewart, so we need to find somewhere else, someone else for that third slot.
Does, uh, is, is Marty Stewart our only option for a headliner on this paper, I mean, on our page for Friday night?
Well, well, he's, he's the Bluegrass, he's been, he's the Bluegrass.
I'm just looking at the pricing, I just look at the pricing too, you know?
It's negotiable, Mr. Stewart. But that's where we've landed on our headliners in the last three years, between twenty-five and twenty-seven.
Who was our headliner Friday night, for Friday night?
Marty Stewart.
No, uh, this past year. Friday night headliner. Oh, Diane?
Blue Highway.
I, I remember spending that kind of money on Saturday night, but I don't remember spending that kind of money on Friday nights, only reason I'm little hesitant, mayor.
It was on Friday night, I'm sure.
Blue Highway.
Boys, yeah, they're from home, they, they were strictly, strictly a local Bluegrass, they're local Bluegrass in the region.
But they were local cops too, correct? I mean, they were mid-range and all that.
Yeah, they were, yeah, they were, mid-range.
That's the only thing that's holding me up just a little bit is, is the overall price tag for Friday and Saturday night. But I don't see any other Bluegrass names that really stick out.
Do we have to do Bluegrass Friday night, or is it like a hack?
Well, it's typically been Bluegrass, that's what we started with, it didn't have to be, obviously, no.
Do we have a, I don't change, do we have a price for what we already have Friday night, total, not counting the headliner? I've got Saturday already, total, for Friday.
I'd say Friday.
From the Edge is.
Not for, not for local bands. Simply Us is about eight hundred to a thousand.
Okay, so probably two thousand for the.
Oh, it's on the home border, sorry.
Yeah. That's Saturday.
Yep. Plus four hundred and forty.
About five dollars each, from the Edge.
Torn Rhythms is Saturday, that's four hundred.
It's four hundred.
So four hundred plus the three we chose, and then Friday, five thousand dollars each, so we've got three of those. So we're sitting at two thousand dollars.
You got three on Saturday, mayor, or not, or four? Saturday's, Saturday's full, Saturday's full, aren't you got John Langston, Corey Smith, on the border, on the border, and Torn Rhythms.
I don't know nothing about Chase Matthew or Holly Williams.
What's the price on Torn Rhythms, mayor?
Four hundred.
Four hundred dollars. Well, that don't cover the gas money.
Well, they thanked us for, what we said is, we thanked, he thanked us for giving them a shot luck last year, and they were gonna hold our price since we gave them a shot.
Great.
He might like, grew up like Merle Hager, Ben Hager's son is great. And that's, that is the lower couch. No, it's, no, it's not Bluegrass.
What's his singing, mayor?
That I can't tell you.
And can you sing it?
Oh, he can sing it, sounds just like, he sounds a lot like his daddy.
Do you have any previews you'd like to?
I'm not singing.
You got three minutes. You got three minutes, mayor. Brad, you got the clock.
And I guess to answer your question about it, no, Elijah, I don't think, I mean, council decides, it don't have to be all Bluegrass, no, no.
Are we still in line to get our twenty-five to forty thousand dollars worth of donations, Tony, and then?
Yes, sir.
In the range, somewhere in that range, you'd think, or?
Forty to fifty, that's what I get it at, yeah, yeah, I think we're good on that. So you're on our sponsorships?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
You're gonna have Ben Hager as John Langston?
No, 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 leave Saturday alone, though, Saturday's take care of it.
Money, let's walk around a little bit.
Well, I feel a little better with the donations, I forget about that.
Don't get Ben Hager for Friday night?
With the sponsorship.
I'm welcome to that, if y'all are. Instead of Marty Stewart.
I, I would be more.
That drops about twelve, minimum.
But he is available, right?
I understand he is, yes, sir.
Let's go with him. You watch Marty Stewart on TV every Saturday.
You won't be there Saturday night.
Right.
You'll be a few. Listen to you in person.
That's right. Y'all hear me out now? We're up. The Edge, have we picked the, have we picked the fourth group for Friday? I've got Ben Hager, Simply Us, From the Edge, so what you get there?
Yeah.
Who's the second one, huh?
Simply Us, they are local, they're from East Tennessee State, they grew up, they're part of the, they played last year, those Blue Reds, they are. And they were good, by the way, really good.
And we, just for the council, we budgeted a hundred twenty-five thousand for our annual events, it's all of our events, so that doesn't count the donations, mayor, or the sponsorships. One hundred twenty-five thousand in the budget for all annual.
Would there be another local that we could get for Friday night for the other?
Hold on.
So Ben Hager, headliner Friday night, mayor?
Yep.
And?
From the Edge. From the Edge. That welcome group, make the. Simply Us.
You said From the Edge and Simply Us are a thousand of these.
I feel a lot in the air.
I'd like to try to find somebody local, mayor, for Friday night.
I would too.
And if we can't, we can always see who's left out there to.
Oh, Tony Brown, sorry, mayor, yeah.
I thought he was, something, I told him he wasn't, what?
Yeah, that's, I just recalled, yeah, I talked to Tommy Schrader, Tony Brown, talked to Andrew, so I, I didn't have any luck finding any, not just him playing, but who they recommend, so we could listen to them to see if they'd be viable, and he has Tony Brown that I reached out to.
Alright, so, as far as getting these back somewhere to get, for Ben Hager, John Langston, who's the other? Where's the local?
Corey Smith.
Corey Smith.
Like him on the border?
Got to work on the border, good. Alright, I'm gonna read them one more time, if I can.
There's a boat, it's in play.
I'm gonna go through this one more time, y'all ready? Friday, Ben Hager, Simply Us, From the Edge, and we're gonna try to find another local band, is that correct?
Sure.
Saturday, John Langston, Corey Smith, On the Border, and Torn Rhythms. Is that correct? Now, the only, we've already got that group for the eyes, what was it, for the beach party? You know that name?
Band of Oz. Band of Oz.
Yep, okay. What we don't have is July the fourth.
Will we still get the middle chairs?
Yeah, the cause in for them, for rock and, you know, they got, they had a family emergency last year, and they weren't able to come. We got notice on the day of the event, if I'm not mistaken, so.
Oh, man.
Yes, they were.
Yeah. So, uh.
Forty-nine Winchester.
Scott, I don't have any other ways I can tell you, thanks for that question. You go to, would you go with Luke Combs or come to eleven? If you're forty-nine Winchester? Would you go on tour with Luke Combs or go to eleven?
Hard choice. That'd be a hard choice.
Well, this song's Russell County, I mean, why wouldn't you come home?
Well, they'll be back, it's not this summer.
Maybe easier to reach out to Luke Combs, mayor.
I'd say, he's not even in, I'd say Luke right now, that he went in the day of the year.
No.
He won something big last week, I'd say he's six figures all the way, or maybe seven, maybe seven figures. Okay, are we good? The four of you, I'll be thanking.
Give us some names, mayor.
I will.
Availability.
I will.
I like this list, there it is.
Alright. Alright. The next item is, we now have, I think Keith got all of his documents late today to Matthew, uh, for the, to, to complete the con, excuse me, contract for the A R C grant. I'd like to, I need a motion to authorize me to execute the agreement instead of construction.
I'll make that motion, second.
Motion in a second, there's a further discussion?
Yes, what's the negotiated price, mayor?
Take off, the only thing we can take off, we had the, the kiosk is gone, so I don't think it was eighteen thousand, somewhere in there. Uh, we had the, the chair thing at the side, after reviewing further laws with A D A, and consultation with D H C D and A R C, we, we kinda feel like it's best to leave it in there. Think we'd better leave it in there.
What's the number, mayor?
Eighteen from six fifty-six, somebody. And I think what we ought to do, Scott, is make it an up to amount. Not to exceed amount.
Six thirty-eight, Drew?
Six thirty-eight, okay. Would you amend your motion to up to amount, up to and not to exceed?
Right.
Okay. Brad? You good on the second? Further discussion? Oh, that's a favorite motion, say aye?
Aye.
Hold a second, sign.
Drew, is, mayor, has Keith invoiced us for all of phase two? Are we settled up with phase two yet? Cause I know it's pretty much done.
It's pretty much done, or hasn't got all of it yet, but he's going, we're gonna take care of it and have it all.
Be good to get that taken care of as quick as we can, uh, so that as the bills come in, we won't get, keep them separate from, from the A R C funding.
That'd be probably good to close that.
He must have a base two, he needs to be in the house as soon as possible.
Yeah. And that said, as soon as we found a change order from Kins, it's completed with Debbie, they'll be setting a date to actually complete the downtown project. It'll be a close, a closeout meeting, Drew. Okay, annual, our annual employee Christmas dinner, I think last year, did we do our dinner, then meet? Did we come out here to meet after lunch?
Yes, sir, I think so.
I remember doing that, we didn't come back at night.
No, you're right.
At two o'clock, wouldn't it? You good with that?
Yes, sir.
It'll be on the twelfth this year. Uh, Brad, twelfth, can you do two o'clock?
Do my best.
Employee lunch, and then we'll come, the school day, mayor, I don't know, can you make it?
I'm scheduled to work that day too, mayor, I'm not off yet, but I think I can get off, but I'm not for sure.
You're about, you're about, you're up there, aren't you?
Well, yeah, Monday's still Monday, at the drugstore.
Dog, can you make it?
Yeah.
Uh, Deanna?
It's all hands on deck.
The twelfth, the lunch, and then?
Yeah, then the meeting. Eleven thirty-one's the lunch. I stay up until? I think so.
Eleven thirty-one, it'll be at two, mayor, the last.
Then the meeting, the regular meeting will be at two o'clock for December.
Is it just for employees, another plus one, another family member?
And be, yeah, for employees.
They probably, they bring a plus one.
Fit them in that room.
Okay. Oh, everybody alright right now? In good shape, alright, Drew? Damn, man, this report.
That lunch you moved all the time?
Eleven thirty. Eleven thirty-one. But this report looks slow.
Yeah, come on, ask, come on, ask for it, come on. You notice we just took here a phase three on Russell County. Brad, find that, Drew. Uh, the information, thank you, quote, be quotes.
Don't you just walk us really fast, right through?
And I've got them in order, uh, on here. Start with flagpole quotes for the Veterans Park. Starts with carrot top entries, that'd be the first quote. These are for two flagpoles, when we're out at Veterans Park, and we look at it, uh, the American flag is a little bit low. So what we can do is, to have it by through, is we can take one that's American flagpole right now, move it to the side, buy one that matches it, for the other side, and in the center, it'll be the forty-foot pole, right now it's a thirty-foot pole. So the two quotes, one of these is from carrot top entries at seven thousand, T N A four, the other one is from Gates Flag and Mater Company, and that's the supplier, sells Brad for Haco, we pick those up at Haco.
That's an ambulance.
Yeah, so that's why that does not have a shipping price on it, that's a forward pickup price.
Alright.
That's how much, Drew?
Uh, six thousand five hundred eighty-two.
So the local is cheaper, is that what you're saying, ambulance?
Yes.
Amco?
Amco's cheaper. HACCO's cheaper.
Or the, sorry. That eight inch butt, is that what actually, is that the bottom base?
Bottom base, yeah, and it's a little, that's a little bit bigger, I think that matches more of what's out there, the other one has a five inch and seven inch butt.
The, uh, local quote, I did notice that the wall thickness of the, of the actual flagpole itself is a hundred and fifty-six thousand for the small and the big one, which is thicker than what carrot top quoted. So it's also a positive against you.
You have recommendations on this particular quote, Drew?
Anytime I can buy a local, I'd like to buy a local.
Okay. Council's, council's pleasure. On the flagpole for the veterans park.
HACCO?
Yeah.
I'll put that before the motion, Mayor.
So a second?
A second.
Further discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Vote, same as I.
First start with my software first.
How long does that gonna take? I'm, I mean, I'm being serious, compared to these other quotes, how much discussion is that gonna be gonna take?
About this much.
That's what I saw, I'm just kidding.
Uh, not a ton. I tried to prepare you with little videos and stuff in the management report. Uh, but I did talk, this one was probably ten or twelve demonstrations with soft, utility billing, software, uh, companies. Uh, ours is just, with Southern, super outdated, third-party billing system, tons of confusion. The reports are pretty much put in manually. Uh, like I said, it's just, the customer pool is, I, I have a hard time using it even, unless you have your bill sitting right in front of you, putting your account number in, having to relog in every time. So one part, one thing I hear from citizens a lot is our stuff on our website is not user-friendly. This is only the utility billing software, we'd still be using Southern for our accounting software.
For our what?
Accounting.
You still looking at, are we gonna keep?
We are, but let's spread it out a little bit, yeah, this is compatible with Southern, this price does, uh, include the information and integrate with Southern. And it's also includes, uh, your, once you pay, uh, even one of these, both, both proposals, one is you're actually buying the software, twenty-eight thousand three hundred four dollars, uh, and then six thousand eight hundred sixty for annual, you're buying that software and that's six thousand eight hundred is a annual maintenance fee, I can pay that around seventy. The eleven thousand seven hundred forty upfront with the seven hundred eighty-one dollar monthly fee is your, basically you're renting the software off of them monthly, but that also comes with a four-year contract.
Drew, are we for sure, I mean, are we, are we still considering getting away from Southern software? And going to, back to Accufund or some other accounting software that may or may not include utility billing?
Not, but all of the accounting software that I've looked at that meets our needs does not, does not include. Accufund does include utility billing, but it's basically the same as Southern on that side of it.
Just what I found, just basic?
Just basic, and that's what I found out, looking at stuff is, if you find one company that does everything, they just do everything okay. They don't have a specialty in utility billing or a specialty in accounting or a specialty in payroll, uh, that sort of thing. So the goal was to get away from Southern eventually and have, I've looked at, uh, an accounting program that integrates really well with this program, but I'd like to separate those out into, uh, calendar years, budget years, a little bit. Uh, this takes about three months to integrate, so you're looking at about three months' worth of work and training that they do to integrate where you fully go to the system.
What do we pay monthly, a day for what we have?
You pay a, we own, we pay around fifty thousand dollars for Southern.
Right there.
Huh?
We're paying that, what do we pay annually for Southern?
Around six thousand.
Oh, six thousand. Is that more of a priority, Drew? To get the, to get the, um, I mean, Beverly seems to complain a lot about Southern software.
Mm-hmm.
And for, I don't know, she, I mean, just some of the comments she's made, like having to go out of the system and back in, out of the system and back in, going when you shift from, like utilities, uh, you know, to taxes, for example, and work versus Accufund. And I'm not advocating for Accufund, I'm just advocating for this capability.
Right.
Just bringing a person's name up and everything comes there, whether it's they have, what?
This does that.
So, but this only does it for the utility?
Includes taxes and business license.
Okay.
Yep. But once we move, we get to this, the only thing we'll use Southern for will be payroll, budgeting and H R.
But should we get, should we get situated on our accounting software first before, before we integrate this into a system that we don't know if we're gonna stay with? That's one concern I have.
Understand, like, like I said, the, my goal in the long run is to go, to go with a, it's basically a brother kind of, this is called M I P accounting. But it's, it's costly too, I'd like to back it up till, until July and try to integrate. One of the two, you know, try to balance them out, fiscal years, and it's not the same fiscal year they have a budget for. Uh, cause we have, we do have thirty thousand dollars capital outlay and administration, so, in the budget for, for this year.
About to spin that on cameras. Some of it anyways, yeah.
Do we have any intentions whatsoever talking to Beverly about going back to Southern? You mean back to Accufund?
That's what I meant, back to Accufund.
I think she'd do it, I think she would do it tomorrow if we did. But, but we don't know if Accufund is the best, I mean, we can still have those capabilities, right Drew, to have a better, a more modern, technology savvy?
I'm not saying we don't go back to Accufund on accounting, payroll, that sort of thing.
But no matter what, this'll integrate.
It integrates with both of them.
Whatever management system we get.
It integrates with Southern, Accufund and, uh, M, can't think of it now, M I P accounting, the three main ones that we've looked at and, and also Southern, integrates with all three of those. Yeah, uh, the only thing with Accufund, and if it works, and the ladies like it a lot, I know they have to go back and look at Accufund a lot, even now, if you're using Southern, they go back and look at Accufund's older reports. Only thing bad, that's kind of the same thing with Southern, is with Accufund, you're still paying for a utility billing software that we're not using. Instead of just paying for...
Yeah, regardless of who's...
You go with this, you go with this, and then you go with Accufund, you'd be paying for utility billing one and two that you're not using. But like I said, Accufund, I think specializes a lot more on the accounting and budgeting side than they do utility billing. This is, usually is only a utility solutions software, they don't do anything else. I did get to add in taxes and business license. So when you pull up someone's account, all their stuff is, uh, has under one account and it's transferable, they, uh, change addresses, same account number goes with them. Another thing that's super nice, like I said, just a super updated, user-friendly software. Right now, one problem, one main problem we have other than just software bots, uh, where people, you know, trying to pay their bill online and not going through, that kind of, and one thing we have is, say it's cutoff day. And you're on the cutoff list. And since he's made that cutoff list and sent it out with John Dotson and Ed at nine o'clock this morning, you come in at ten o'clock and pay your water bill. Your water's gonna be cut off when you, when you go home from work.
Right there.
Because, right, when you get home from work, your water will be cut off, but at nine o'clock, you were on the cutoff bill and they left with it. So usually we'll get a call about six o'clock, Billy will or I will, like to call out Hank or Billy or myself, somebody will run out, cut the water back on, verify the next morning they actually did pay it, everything caught up with the blades. This is, John and Ed may not like it first, so we'll listen and train with it. Uh, this comes with an iPad that automatically updates every time. So if you're on the cutoff list and you go in your phone and pay your water bill, it automatically go off the cutoff list, that's it.
Go back to your example. So if we have, someone hadn't paid your water bill, they're on the cutoff list at nine. We come in, someone comes in, pays it at ten thirty.
As long as they had things in their house.
Don't they got those iPads?
Automatically updates.
They'll let them, so they won't turn the water on, is that what you're saying?
Yep, and you can also opt in for email, phone call, email robo-call or text messaging alerts, so if you're on the cutoff list, you get a text message that says you're on the cutoff list.
What kind of strategy can we have to get town citizens, business owners, to get direct, to get it directly withdrawal each night? In regards, in regards to the software?
Number one, I think the user-friendliness of, I think right now it's just super hard, complicated to sign up on, a lot of people don't even know we have it anymore. Used to be you could automate a certain amount per month, it wasn't your actual bill. It's like you'd go in and pay fifty dollars a month. Well, the thing we remain into, a lot of people do that, well, if you raise rates and also their water bill, it used to be forty-six dollars if they were covering, fifty now it's sixty dollars.
What would you?
And they're only paying fifty dollars, so it adds up over months.
What would you think about requiring our commercial accounts to do, to automate, to do direct withdrawal? I mean, I know some of our citizens, you know, they may not check their accounts and we'd have to work with them on that, and obviously it'd have to be a phased approach.
Right.
But, I mean, I don't think it's out of realm to make that a requirement. I'm sure these, you know, I think convenes them and, you know, obviously be patient on getting set up, get them set up and strategically, we don't want to do something at a time, but...
And part of this, uh, training facility or hosting and training process, part of what's in this process, also, uh, advertising and reaching out to citizens to get them signed up on, uh, both texts, the phone, the emails and the, uh, user portal. So there's a marketing thing if you're looking at it.
So, again, Drew?
Yes, sir. Is this something we need to decide by budget time to start July fir, July first, to give you three months? I guess, I mean, a, a amount of vote on it or a, you know, discussion or, I mean, what's, what would be your goal? Sorry, Mayor, I didn't mean to...
You interrupted me.
Yeah.
I was lost my thought. I wanna know how, my question was, how does this help our citizens over water bill?
I think the easiest part is just the, the easiness of portal, the customer portal, online, go online, pay your taxes, pay your water bill, pay your business license.
You can do all that online?
Yep.
With this, but you can pay your water bill, pay your taxes, what else?
Business license.
And your license, online. Still have to come in the front door here.
Right, you, you can pay your, we have the capability to pay it online right now.
All, all three of those?
On our website, um, I think it's just utility billing.
I believe it's just utilities.
Yeah, it's just, it's hard to not get the friend links.
Taxes you can pay online too?
The town taxes, can you? Okay.
Oh, you can?
Then the drop down, the drop down when you like.
Yeah, you can choose the water bill, that's part of the taxes, yeah.
I guess I'm gonna tag on Scott's question, is this something we have to decide tonight on?
That's what I'm asking for, you don't have to, uh, if you need more information on it, or like I said, I did send you that video, should have it in your email, uh, and a brochure on it, uh, if you need to look about it, like I said, it's just a...
On page, on page six of ten, does it charge our citizens two percent for every time that they use this, use this software for a transaction to pay a bill? Under miscellaneous services. I had it circled, two percent. Even which, which I think the town charges one and a quarter, one and three quarters percent on the credit card, but what, what I don't like is like if you sign up for like an E check or direct, directly paying the bill, it still charges you, I mean, the way I read it, it still charges you two percent for a transaction. It says, are paid by the utility customers and collected by C U S I, C U S I, which, you know, that's...
The E check validation is a dollar fifty, twenty cents per transaction, so that, that would be a dollar seventy. Of course, I guess it's according to what your bill is, what percentage that would come to, it looks like that's a flat rate.
Yeah, I'm assuming that E check versus a electronic check, I mean, what's, I don't know the difference in, in those two, unless you just, I've seen one that's great, like, great withdrawal, one is literally an E check. You know, the check number and...
I remember, I remember asking Tanner that question.
I mean, that, that bothers me a little bit about the program.
I don't think it's an entire, every single time you pay your bill, you get, you get paid two percent on there. I'm trying to remember what that was, and I can figure it out if I can, but I'm sure it wasn't a, every single time you pay your bill, you get charged two percent for using the program. It was something, um... Might have been the get set up on, I can't remember exactly what it was, so I can figure that out. But I do remember asking him about that, if we did or if the customer, if that was two percent per transaction, it was not, uh, like every time you get a bill, you're adding two percent on.
Drew, that's big money for those guys, that's a big money.
It is, it is.
If, if that's the case, if it's actually per transaction.
I'm leaning toward Drew, my thoughts on this is this, I really, there's a lot of information here to make, for us to make a, a good, responsible decision on. With everybody having an opportunity to discuss again with you, uh, I mean, I, I guess, Scott, I, I'm thinking this all goes to finance committee, the personnel with Drew, and with, and to discuss nothing else but this. I mean, I, there's so many questions about this tonight, I don't know if we can make a decision tonight. That's just my thoughts. Unless, or unless you all are ready to make a motion.
Uh, I mean, that's fine, I mean, I'll be glad to...
Cause we got user fees, there are citizens going to have to pay, we need, I'd like to know how it's gonna work in the budget, in the middle of the budget, we're in, right now, the middle of this current budget year. Is that we, do you know if we've made allocations for this type?
We have thirty thousand dollar, uh, capital outlay and administration, like Scott said, I think we're gonna use it on some cameras here.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying, there's other things, I'm not, I'm just, I don't know if, if everybody's on the, I don't know if we're really, y'all understand what I'm trying to say here?
One hundred percent. I, I understand.
Deanna?
I'll drive the way.
I'm waiting.
Scott? You good? You work with that? You good? Barry, the lines, y'all are good?
Good to report with the finance committee.
Yeah, just let, yeah, I'd like to...
Drew, if you would, go ahead and put those videos back and maybe have the town manager report this, this week, attach those again, probably everybody have a chance to get in that portal, see what the portal looks like and size.
A brochure on it too, that's quite a question, or answers quite a...
One thing also, talk, going back to that management system, we're gonna have a finance committee meeting on it to get farther and better. I'd like to see what the cost difference is with the M I P, as a management system, and this is the secondary billing setup versus, say, Accufund, with this being the secondary, the cost, the analysis between the two. And possibly Beverly watching, you know, some type of demo on M I P, you did say that was M I P here.
Yep.
Drew, I don't know if we'll make it to the cameras in the van, we got thirty thousand. You got a little bit of surplus, might have taken.
I think that's a good point, that's probably a good point too, you know, that'd be, if it's, the worst chance to be any schedule, Beverly and Diane do that need to answer these kind of questions. Cause they're the ones, they're always have to live with it, they're like...
They did the demonstration of...
Yeah, that's it.
And just to follow up on that, Drew, I know you've spent a lot of time and, you know, energy in it.
Yeah.
I appreciate you giving us as much information as possible. I appreciate you giving us as much information as possible.
Lot of work. Go ahead, there.
Uh, van quotes, the, uh, put in here, I think, four from CarMax, uh, and Brad, and sent me a couple from Blue Ridge. Vans on those are, uh, steel Chrysler vans, some of them are across the Pacifica and some of them are across the Voyager. But all falling in that same criteria that we have. The second van, two thousand twenty-one Voyager LXI for twenty-seven, nine ninety-eight.
Yep.
Is not only available. Check that one.
Drew, go ahead.
Which one's red? Uh, the second one, Chrysler, twenty twenty-one, twenty, forty-seven thousand dollars on it, for twenty-seven, nine ninety-eight.
It's good with so.
Yes, sir.
There's a long, like, a long name, why don't you remember?
Yeah. Freeway Texas. How about the one from Blue Ridge, the first one from Blue Ridge, uh, is the same van, but the first quote for three thousand dollars includes ten-year, hundred fifty thousand dollar bumper warranty. The second one is without that warranty.
You talking about the twenty twenty-one Voyager?
Twenty twenty. It does not have an age, it's just a purchase, Drew. From Blue Ridge.
Oh, good reason.
It goes on past pictures, CarMax, there's one, purchase from Blue Ridge, and then there's a, uh, email for twenty twenty-one from, I guess that's Blue Ridge, did you write it right? And it offers the same thing, twenty-six, nine, without the warranty, add three thousand dollars to the issue. Ten-year, hundred fifty thousand dollars.
What was the balance on that?
Sixty-five thousand, and.
What was the, for a minute?
Sixty-nine thousand.
Is that a third-party warranty, or is that a, is that a Chrysler warranty? Is there a deductible or a warranty? Do we have any, do we have anything on that warranty?
I do not. You got anything, Brad?
No, just, it includes it.
Service contract, it's three thousand dollars on the price. Uh, then it just says it includes ten-year, hundred fifty thousand dollars of, of, of.
Is granite crystal metallic, is that for a while? Green, it's gray color. So it's a charcoal?
Yeah.
Another twenty twenty-one.
We're green or white, though, yeah?
The twenty twenty-one is white.
Elijah, do you have a recommendation?
Something twenty twenty-one car on Instagram.
Brad?
It's in my head.
It's in the email. And it's pictures behind it, so.
Yeah.
Gotcha. I'd like to get a little more information on the extended warranty. Uh, I mean, a lot of times those things are gray, sometimes you have three thousand dollars worth that you might need in it. Which one did you say is not available from CarMax?
The second.
Forty-seven thousand miles?
Yes.
And I know it's hard for them to put you a deal sheet together, Drew, without, you know, without getting ready to pull the trigger, that twenty-eight, nine ninety-eight for the twenty twenty-one Voyager, the first quote we have, forty-two thousand miles. Do you know if there's any type of dock process and fees, any of that stuff? For the, uh, the one from CarMax?
I think most of all, everyone on that, I put on here a nine-nine dollar shipment to the personal CarMax.
Is that, is that out the door price, excluding tax?
This twenty-nine, nine ninety-eight, is what we're talking about.
Twenty-eight, nine ninety-eight.
I'm guessing it's not for the shipment.
But that's, but I guess what I'm saying, is that a solid number like Blue Ridge over here? You've got, you've got twenty-five pence of sale price by the time you get to the bottom, twenty-nine, five over one. I just don't want to, I just don't want to narrow this down to two vehicles, and a twenty-eight, nine ninety-eight turned into a thirty-two thousand, three fifty, you want to mean?
Well, at the bottom, it says price excludes the cost of optional equipment, state and local taxes, tax registration, title fees on it. So all of that will be added on top of that too. At the very bottom.
Yep.
Oh, there, yeah, a little less for them then.
Top of the issue. I think the twenty twenty-one from Blue Ridge is the best thing through the book. The newest, white. It's got the least miles.
Exactly, the dock fees and everything, that, that includes.
That's without the warranty. Twenty-six, nine.
Twenty-six, five.
Twenty-six, nine.
Twenty-six, nine.
Yeah, yeah.
On the email.
On the email.
Put a picture note behind the one.
I always wanted to warranty anyway, Elijah, I was worried for this, we got our own shop.
Oh, man, that's where I was going with the warranty.
So emails from, is that Blue Ridge, red?
That's from the seller, yeah.
That's a pretty good deal.
Then interior pictures follow up.
It's white?
It's white. It's the newest.
Yeah.
And least miles and best record. And from a local dealer.
Local dealer.
If you do have an issue, take it to them. I don't think you can do that from that. Is there a VIN number associated with that one from Ron Seiler? It isn't, no.
Wouldn't we have the, you know, when you have that, Drew, or Brian, I mean, just curious, a lot.
Once we committed, it would take a couple of days, the white one was act, I'm sorry, the granite crystal metallic was such a good deal that they bought it. It's on their lot. Whether we buy it or not, it's on their lot.
The email, what else is taken with it?
The white one, took a couple of days. I think I found the VIN number on that, just a second.
So that one's the, the best deal right now?
It is.
This is after the, uh.
Congratulations, move forward with that van from Blue Ridge.
It's, now here's the picture, so it's after, the picture was after, but, you know. This is it right here, right, the picture after.
Where is it?
Right there, right there. That's twenty-six, nine?
Yes.
Lower smiles on it. That's your motion, Brett?
Yes.
With extended warranty?
Without.
So even if there's some process, I mean, process.
This includes the process.
Does it okay?
Yep.
I was gonna say, even if it does, we probably won't be under the other quotes.
We got a motion on the fours or a second?
Yep.
Cause I didn't hear you. Is that a second?
No, sir.
I'll say.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I'd like to discuss just for one second. Soon as I get this VIN, I'll put it in your.
You just gonna do like a CarMax monitor or something like that, or wait, what am I trying to do? Why is it located there?
What is it located there, Brad?
We'll be purchasing it from Blue Ridge and that.
It'll be in, uh, editing in both in a week, yeah, probably at least a week, probably.
And that van didn't tell me all that, you, this, the current thing.
It's done.
It's surplus.
I know, it's risen. It's risen.
Stock and freezing around.
Well, she's got that truck over at Park and Ridge.
That's right. That's too far along. Yeah, I think it approved.
Shine more when we need it.
I think that's a VIN number down there in the, in the actual address, but I can't get it to pull. I can't get it to pull, I don't know.
Well, why don't we approve a contention, now that it hasn't been ranked and you've done appropriate CarMax, so.
I'm pumped that.
How's that?
Yes, sir.
You good with that, Brad? What's he looking for, being them?
I'm comfortable moving forward. I've traded with them before, they're not necessarily something he hadn't already looked up. The CarMax or anything on.
When we're doing our new deals, it's by me here, but we've validly checked it. I'm good with it too, but as long as it's like that, but I don't know.
Can you find?
What would be the, uh?
They did perform a CarMax, the manager performed a CarMax and it's clean CarMax.
I agree with you.
That's from the dealership.
Over Blue Ridge?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So he did a, what you got?
CarMax.
CarMax? It's clean CarMax.
I'd say once Drew verifies that, we're good. Are we not?
Yeah. And a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Hoes?
Aye.
Thank you, Brett. Thanks everybody.
Keep your local.
Keep rolling there.
Back there.
Mr. Short?
Yes, sir.
You breathing?
I'm good.
All right.
Next is quotes on our cameras, wireless cameras that all, uh, town properties.
Security cameras for wastewater plant, water plant, shop, and near, and where else?
Parks.
And parks.
And we're going to put a fire hall in this as well, whether it be four or eight cameras. We have a process for four cameras and a process for eight cameras, so whoever decides it is the one that's there.
And Drew, can you, this, I, I already answered this, I think it's important, council, no, the, the locations will have their own DVR, and it'll be a central location here for DVR, I mean, in our observer room.
And certainly be able to see all locations. Every location has, will have a DVR capable of seven days' storage, except for the town hall, town hall has thirty days' storage. But most, anything that's done legalizes requires thirty days' storage.
And department heads will be able to have access?
You can have, have an app, will have access in there, obviously. Uh, then you can have an app to where it has, I think some limited users, uh, can have access to it. But you can also decide which user to have access to which cameras. So if you only want those department heads to have access to their department, not all the others, you can just give them access.
Can you, I mean, does that mean you can be at the house and check the wastewater plant camera?
Any of them.
Live, live?
Yep.
Inside and outside?
The only ones I got right now are for outside surveillance cameras. But they will send you a, I did do inside here, uh, through the lobby and the hallways, down the police station, and inside direct center to the gym, fitness room. Uh, the four at water, wastewater were just outside, um, and then obviously the parks and shop, all that was, they were outside. Uh, but they will send you, you can send them Google Maps and they will draw out. This is not, neither one of these involved, completely installed, yes, installed. Installed got five hundred dollars a camera. And process to get installed.
We can install?
Yes. But they will give us a side map of the best areas, put our maps for the best coverage.
So wouldn't we want some cameras in the interior or dwellings at some points, like? I mean, like to protect our, I don't know, maybe in, uh, I mean, our assets, or make sure, I mean, our guys probably store stuff, make sure it doesn't get damaged, just like the security standpoint with that? Yeah, I mean, like armored spaces maybe, and just like the hotspots and if John Michael, like if John Michael wants cameras inside, then I think we ought to do cameras inside for him, though, for example, if he wants them on the interior.
Right.
So, I mean, maybe the department heads can help with that decision, but I'm good knowing what the pricing is, you know, moving forward with the cheapest quotes. Uh, but does that complicate installing stuff, do you think, or is that?
No, I think, uh, you can probably, you can check and see, there's, there's several cameras in, interior and exterior cameras that you have to change up, but I think the install wouldn't be any different on us.
I, I'd be really interested in having, you were at the water plant, for example. Somebody breaks in our wastewater plant and or our water plant. I see that, I, it's valuable to me to have pictures available to see if they do something to mess up with the mechanics or the chemicals or that kind of stuff. You know what I'm saying? Either I'd like for you to be able to see it, I'd certainly like the police to be able to see it. You know, I'm not, uh, if we're going to go the camera route, maybe just start out with, as far as the interior, let it be the wastewater and water plants. I'd just like to really protect the infrastructure, it's important.
Well, then it's important not only to see them come in, what, you know, if they break in, what did they do while they were in there?
That's right.
Whether they walked out there with anything or not, what did they actually accomplish while they were in there? Whether it be, you know, here at the town hall, whether it be water, wastewater, whether it be maintenance shops, whether it be fire department, wherever, I think it's.
So can we do a combination of exterior and interior?
Yeah, that's what, or do we need to phase it, I guess it's what, you know.
Yeah, I mean, there's interior cameras, I'm just quote all red for interior, obviously, you can, I mean, you can look through and see the difference if you look up the town hall. Town hall, uh, four interior cameras, uh, and exterior cameras are one ninety-nine each, interior and exterior, so there's no difference about interior and exterior.
I would tell them, Elijah, I'd like to do two to four interior cameras as well at facilities.
Yeah, it's important.
The good thing is, is.
I don't want to step that line, step over that line there, employees think we're spying on them as well.
Well, no, I'm not trying to spy on them.
I know.
But if we got, if we got somebody getting in there on wastewater plant with the bad intentions, nothing but bad's gonna come out of that. Or mess up our water plant.
Yeah, water plant, I mean, you can put someone filter room area, uh, wastewater, all, all operations are outside.
In our shop, we can tell if people are stealing equipment. You don't have to go inside there.
Right.
If they come out there, they're, either they're gonna try to take, tear a truck up, or try, I mean, it's, no, this is security for the property of the citizens. I know where you're at, I think, huh?
I mean, obviously, I can get an air transmission also from a investigation standpoint. Lieutenant Kaisers are investigating, but you pull cameras, you know, to see different things, and it's pretty important. Uh, good thing is, these are IR cameras, which is infrared, so it's dark. They project infrared, which means you can still see in the dark. That's what we have at our facilities, and incredibly, incredibly important. We've got interior and exterior, and I can watch them off the cell phone. Because we have, you know, people's personal property stored inside our facilities, and it's incredibly important to be able to, you know, protect their assets also.
I mean, how much money we got sitting out there in fire all day? You know, over half of the plus, right? But I mean, I, certainly, I understand where you're at.
And hopefully, like I said, we can see what kind of technology's out there. Hopefully, we can just tie in our department's cameras they have already.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know how old they are.
Speaking of, speaking of that, what about, what about tying in with Parks and Rec over here, regardless, we have four, bro, four down right now. Sure, waiting on.
Yep. But he's gonna look at, uh, we're gonna send some pictures of the backs of them, how they plug in, what kind of cables.
Will they work when that front guy's still, or leave here?
They worry, that's how they got the picture of the guy.
Oh, okay.
I think they got quite a few interior cameras over there.
Yeah, I think it's the interior ones.
Oh, okay.
I think it's just, you know, we talked about it, I mean, it's as far as surveillance, whatever it is, just how it lands with, with our employees. I mean, I'm not interested in watching them do their job. We trust them to do their job, you know, every day and we allow them to do that, but still, we wanna, like the mayor says, secure our facilities and if something does go nuts, I mean, the daytime we live in now, if you have more information, the data that we have, the better, that's unfortunate.
It is unfortunate. It really is the same with towns, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I would think about other public buildings, for example. I don't know of any that don't have interior cameras. In their facilities, interior.
Safety standpoint too, and I've got them covering my front office, because a lot of times, you know, I'm the one person in the office, I'm sure that, you know, you take the ladies up front that appreciate, you know, the sense.
Yeah, the, the town hall's closed for interior, yeah, the lobby, hallways, park lots.
So what do you need to know? Which one, are you wanting to know either the four quote or the eight quote? Is that what you're saying?
The cheapest.
Yeah.
The cheapest is CCTV, uh, there's only two quotes here. Jacob was supposed to get a quote, but he got it behind that yet. That's what, who we have around the cheapest.
That music?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, CCTV is out of, uh, Florida and, uh, SCW, uh, they're out of Asheville. Uh, I think both of them are really good companies, like both of them have good product. Uh, SCW did seem a little bit more commercial, uh, talking to them and their, um, demonstration, I think both of them are, are good choices.
Well, plus the land, you'd have the app to watch what's good.
Just on the number of cameras that you did get quoted, what is the difference in the two companies' trailer?
Five thousand.
Five thousand dollars?
Yeah.
What, what was the total for the cheaper?
Fourteen thousand nine fifty-eight, eighty-four.
Is that a bunch for a chance?
So far.
So far.
No, it's nineteen thousand, seven eighty-five.
Yeah, and if we did a, if you did a proportion increase, what would you just guess them out of the top of your, I mean, head, what would, if we ended up adding those interior cameras too, does that add like a, I don't know how many you got quoted on each facility, for example?
Uh, the water plant has four, that's a.
So that'd probably double.
Seven ninety-nine.
It's, it's one thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Here's, here's one more thing for Drew and the council to, to think about. If you have a facility here that you think, well, I think four will do it, in the future, you think we should've got two more or three more, you can always buy an eight camera DVR and then add more cameras as needed. That's what we did. I bought a sixteen camera DVR and only put twelve cameras in. I've since added two more cameras on the exterior, uh, so, you know, that'll keep you from buying a DVR a second time.
Yeah, it looks like the difference between, um, a two terabyte DVR and a four terabyte, which is the difference in four and eight is, uh, a hundred and twenty-five dollars, so it's a no brainer.
Yeah, so what, is that your recommendation? Which one are you recommending?
Uh, I, I think either one of them are, are visible, so I may go on, make, uh.
Ask which closer. I'm thinking about service. You're getting the equipment out of them.
You mean, were they more expensive up there?
They are about four thousand more.
Is, does Carlton, does he work on cameras, IT wise?
I don't know.
Um, I mean, our, our IT, our computer technician, he, he installed all our cameras and services.
Do we need to wait on the musics quote, Drew?
Uh, we can, if you want to. Uh, SCW has a Black Friday sale on this quote, uh, at twenty percent off, uh, but CCTV has a twenty-five percent discount that they just gave us, uh, while I was talking.
On that one?
Both of these have, the cheaper one has a twenty-five percent discount, SCW has a twenty percent discount that goes to end of the year.
How long did we notify the music? Do we directly solicit to those guys as well? And their, the musics have, they've been trying to get on them for weeks, for months, maybe?
Uh, we probably notified them about a month ago, a week ago, I guess. They walked the pro, all the properties about a week ago to count and see how many of them, uh.
Have we gotten good service out of them, Drew? I mean, do you feel, do you?
I don't, I don't fool with them a ton. I know Chief and Shane have, uh, probably with more than anybody. Shane isn't pleased with them most of the time.
Yeah, that's my, I mean.
Yeah, I've heard that.
It's my, it's my.
That's not, that's not. I think they charge, you know, ninety-five dollars an hour, usually two or three of them show up to do some work and it's expensive pretty quick.
Sure.
I might say three, three or four out right now.
So right now it should be between these two that we have.
Mayor, I'm getting the table until December and they've come up with a comprehensive, more comprehensive quote, let's say, add the interior cameras and then that gives the musics a little bit more time locally to, to, uh, if it's not pressing for the council. I do wanna move forward with them, I think it's important that we secure our facility.
So you're saying let Drew work on the quote to the interior, let him adjust things?
Yeah.
Okay.
Him update the quote.
We'll take it with the December then. Everybody good in town?
You're gonna miss out on that discount.
Discount, yep.
What is the difference in the discount, Drew?
Uh, twenty, we're getting a twenty percent discount on SCW, uh.
That's a lot.
Top, is that the cheapest, uh, cheapest quote?
It's not the cheapest.
So is it five thousand over with the discount?
I'm sorry.
See, that one is the cheapest.
It's with the discount, nineteen thousand includes the discount.
See, that's the only reason I don't care to put it off, maybe, because it wouldn't even marry the cheapest quote.
Well, does the, the other one, the Florida one?
The twenty-five percent discount first quote is just, they're giving that to us as, uh, both crew of business, for both business.
So the discounts were already figured in both bids?
Yes.
This is not additional savings?
No.
Oh, okay. I suppose we're gonna get some more name.
Some Black Friday sale on there.
So if we don't go with the second.
The one, the only one we lose by, by tableant until December is the second quote, uh, CCTV, which I've talked about, obviously, I'm, I'm, I think it's been on her, that much money, I think it's been on her for another month.
Drew, is there any way to, is there any way to take those stats on all these cameras and just make sure that they're comparable with each other, in sort of megapixel, portage, uh, the infrared sensors? Because SCW's got a really, SCW has a really good layout here, the actual camera. Uh, shows a one, I don't see that. It's CCTV.
Yeah, it's mostly just under there, uh.
Under the product.
Stretching of the product, yeah.
Okay. Where are we at?
Just wanna make sure we got, we're looking to compare the cameras.
Mm-hmm. I think we are, uh, resolutions and fixed, uh, the fixed lenses, but I'll get a, I can get a spaceship.
About adding eight, twelve cameras, I mean, you're looking at adding.
Probably, uh, just gonna say two to four thousand dollars.
It'll go up in it.
The percentage is a, a discount, uh, the, the.
I'm good, I'm good, but I'm good for the board.
Is that your motion, Mr. Gillen?
Well, I. Were you, uh, I mean, I, I like the cheaper quote, you say you like the lower?
Oh, I'm good, whatever, it's the best for our technical.
Why I ask in that motion is that these cameras are comparable. In technology. Everyhow you wanna make the.
And Drew can, you can, you know what to ask, correct, Drew?
I do.
Make sure we're comparing apples to apples.
Well, I mean, we can hold off too. What, you want to put four, Brad?
Salute.
I'll say that. What's the name of the cheaper group?
CCTV Camera Pros.
Yeah, the motion is second. Any further discussion? You're gonna compare them, correct?
Yes, sir.
All favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. All right?
Three for four.
Three for four. He's still got two more out there. He's still got two more in front of him.
Uh, the next one is UV light replacement.
Is this at the wastewater plant?
Wastewater plant disinfectants.
Oh, yeah. This is one Chris, you talk, talk to us later.
Yes.
Well, we need it, so. And he said they need to have these by council, so we did, so.
Yes.
Is that your motion, Miss Stan?
Yes, I want to go with, I mean, I like, we need to replace that.
Is the Z and M about the best looking like?
No.
What's the UV dock?
So you want the OEM, correct? Trojan is what, uh.
That's what we want.
That's how it's recommended.
That's what is OEM, an OEM.
Chris, that is recommending the, the Trojan.
She said it's the best.
Yeah, that's what the, that's what was there, uh, when they first went in, they used, they had to mark them before, said the life, uh, lifespan's not as, not as good, the disinfectant's not as good. The, that I had in, on the bottom of that quote for like ZMN, it shows ten thousand two ninety-six instead of seven thousand twenty. So, so ZNM Enterprise and, uh, USA Blue Book, the next quote there, seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-two, and then for ZMN, seven thousand twenty, those are bulbs on them. So the UV doctrine, the three thousand two hundred and seventy-two is the sleeve kit that those bulbs go into, so you combine the UV doctrine with either one of those.
You're still thirteen to fourteen of them.
With either one of those quotes, and that's what brings the seven thousand twenty up to two ninety-six.
Ten two ninety-six.
Yes, all right.
Oh, so you've already, you've already put in the sleeves for us.
That's, that's the sleeves, uh, that comes from the UV doctrine, the three thousand two seventy-six, if you go with one of these two, you also have to sleeve.
The Trojan, sixteen thousand is, is the full kit.
That is, yeah.
And that's the one we've used before?
We've used both before.
But Terrence is running in with this one.
Trojan lasts longer and is better.
And it's better, it's, it takes care of the disinfection at the.
Salute.
And then the motion is resecond, we have a second. Any further discussion? All favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Tell Chris thanks for the quotes.
And thanks for getting it, to be able to work on it, what they do out there for us, Drew, thank you. Okay.
The last quote, uh, our last purchase, our last four is police radios. We've done some more work on police radios, uh, to make things a little easier. This is one quote, MCA, Mobile Communications Director Randy Adams. That's one quote, and the other quote is from.
Is that the one we have before?
That's the exact quote we had before.
Okay.
Kind of two copies of it in there.
Do you have that total right there, Drew? MCA?
MCA's total, forty-eight thousand, one forty-three. So there is, so this quote here, Virginia Kentucky Communications, is the second quote. The first page you see there, five thousand, six hundred and twenty, is for the dispatch equipment. What's this gentleman's name, Cody?
Cody Beckenbacher.
Cody misunderstood when Stephanie talked to him the first time and thought that was all we needed, was the quote for dispatch. So we, uh, Chief and I got up today and he sent us this over. This is the actual quote for the in-car stuff, so these quotes match up a little bit better.
Does this one go with this?
So I'm comparing this to the Motorola Solutions.
We're comparing this to MCA, right, for forty-eight thousand?
The Motorola, you're getting Motorola either way. This stuff just makes the Motorola, this is your, your, your install.
So the Motorola Solutions right here, that's the state bid?
Yes.
This is what makes it compatible with what we're, our, this is.
Yes, and originally, all we received from Virginia Kentucky Communications was a five thousand dollar, uh, quote, but that was only for dispatch, so basically that is your eight thousand dollar MCA quote, the first one right here, eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-five, and five thousand, six hundred and twenty. So when you flip over to your MCA, which is what Randy and Bo got us to give at the county uses, uh, all their install, all dash mounts, all in-car repeaters, all of that's forty-eight thousand, one forty-three, and with, uh, Virginia Kentucky, it's forty thousand, three seventy-four.
So those numbers one more time.
MCA is, I'm sorry, I took it back, MCA, but in-car repeaters, thirty-nine thousand, eight sixty-eight.
Oh, not this forty-eight?
No, sorry, forty-eight was total.
You kinda went, now you've been lost me again. Start over, please, what you just said.
So there's two quotes from each place in here. One is a quote for dispatch and one is a quote for all the labor and repeaters for the in-cars.
In this one pack?
In these two packs. Would I just handle each?
And this is a?
Combine it with this. I'll just go away with that one.
Go away with this?
Yes, sir.
All right.
These two quotes, right here, Stephanie's made up.
Now I don't handle this. Do I have that second, that you're holding on?
Sure.
I can have it. Do we not wanna go with the same company for everything and get the total quote from, the total amount from both companies and go with one or the other?
We got it. I got it wrong, I was just trying to explain it.
Give it to.
Is anybody cutting some this race?
Give it a total price.
It's definitely, MCA total price, forty-eight thousand, one forty-three. Virginia Communications, Virginia Kentucky Communications total price, forty-five thousand, nine forty-four.
That's apples to apples.
Apples to apples.
But that's not counted stuff.
But that, that, wait a minute.
That's not counted stuff.
We're basing a lot.
Yeah, that's not counted stuff on state bid.
You got fifty-seven thousand dollars on state bid, that is.
Which we got from both.
That are the ready.
Not all of them.
Who's that through?
Motorola.
Motorola.
Okay.
Which is on state bid, so we're getting that, the fifty-seven thousand, we gotta have no matter what. We gotta have that. The stuff we had to bid out was stuff that was not on con, state contract, so whatever you pick here between the two bids, you gotta add the fifty-seven.
It goes with Motorola.
The fif, does this little bid match up to the fifty-seven? Will, will they work with this?
Fifty-seven, we gotta have it anyway. We gotta have it.
Fifty-seven's the base, and it's on state bid.
So you take your two forties that we got now, the forty-five, or the forty-eight.
And add to it.
And add it up to the fifty-seven. Basically, what we did, we gave MCA and Virginia Kentucky Communications, that's state bid, so that's what we're getting. Tell us what it costs and make it work.
And this, this will put our police force out here in town, we're in need of assistance with the sheriff's office and state police. We now will be able to communicate the ready. Currently, we cannot. That's what I'm.
Currently, we can, but it's a back channel.
It's a what? It's a, yeah.
Yeah.
It takes, it's too long.
What was the price if we managed? What was the price that we made with the original on that, on the equipment from M C A and Virginia Kentucky, on the original quote? What would that total have been, Drew?
Say again?
The total, what would be the total from the original?
All, everything Motorola and M C combined?
The, what we bid it out on the state bid, did they bid the state bid? On these items, on the, on Virginia Kentucky, the forty-five nine and the forty-eight?
They didn't bid on that, they just bid on labor, install.
Okay, just the labor, okay.
Yeah.
So what I've gathered here, Drew, Virginia Kentucky, a total package including the state bid, one oh three eight eleven ninety-two.
Ninety-two, yes, sir.
M C A's one oh six ten ninety-two, three thousand dollars.
And it's important to remember, too, that M C A has done all installation, all service contracts and everything with dispatch up to and after. So if we do look at the Virginia Kentucky Communications, there are new company coming in that's not done any installation up there, at all. So, do we run into any pickups with that?
So is it basically a three thousand dollar difference?
No, it's two thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Okay.
And Bo has expressed that he is not interested in other companies touching stuff that's already been done, and service contracts from other companies except M C A.
It's already been done, I understand that. So it's M C A?
M C A's the recommendation.
One oh.
One oh six.
Six.
Ten ninety-two, but M C A is forty-eight one forty-three of that, what it says.
I understand, I understand. This has been a project we've been working on for that long, over a year?
Well, over a year, yes.
Well, over a year.
Mayor, I'd recommend if we approve this tonight.
Mm-hmm.
That we take it out of our lines as well.
I agree with that, too.
So I have attached the ARB receipt, give your information back to the police.
Where's it at?
It's in the M C A.
It's on the back of the page. Balance is forty-three thousand four thirty-seven.
Oh, I've seen that.
It's in the mod, it's in the notebook.
Yeah, oh, our balance, we've seen that. So we gotta come up with another.
So where?
We need to.
Down in Boxbury, sixty-three thousand.
Need another sixty-three thousand from somewhere else?
And we are applying for a fifty thousand dollar grant.
That's right.
On a guarantee, but we're.
I know, but that stiff is pretty good, getting that money.
It's mainly putting anything toward our P D.
Fifty more. Six, whatever it was for.
Ten.
Ten radios. So sixteen thousand, seventeen thousand?
Will they apply that retro if we buy another pocket on the grant? Sometimes that's an issue, you know?
Who's they?
The finding agent, uh, Rose Bellman, this is the one for, for applying.
Sure thing. Well, if we're buying it, we need to bill Lonzo, right, for those radios.
For the.
Team radios.
Yeah.
This doesn't put any ideas, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, yeah, they will back up in favor of this if we approve it.
So you said she need to talk to the people for the grant, on that grant, and they said if we already made the purchase, they can't back up and bring something we've already members.
Well, now, Drew just took me really sideways.
What's that?
I thought we had, do we not have our radios in this bid for the vehicles? Are the radios in this, is this all just equipment?
No, the vehicles are in there, the portables is what Lonzo bought.
And they're not in here, they're not in this bid, the portables.
The ten are the Motorola bid.
We went to.
Yeah. Not in the Motorola bid.
That's a done deal, that's a done, coming regardless.
Lonzo's heard of all those, according, according to Bo, he's already agreed to buy those.
I know he has, I, wait a minute. Uh, wait just a minute. Lonzo has agreed, as Bo ordered him.
No, he voted on it, he was not gonna order them, until we approved the whole package, as he said.
Makes sense, and then he will bill, will he send the bill to the county for those?
For those, for those.
For the portables, okay, and that's what I wanted to hear.
Is the fire department eligible for that grant?
It could be, I'll check and see on it, I think it's, uh, I think anybody's knowledgeable, but I think first one, police department have a edge. It's fine, but it's not good, I'll check with, uh, R and D. It's like, folks, how can we get our cars from?
From, uh.
USDA.
R and D.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you know, Eric, when the, when the grant would've been awarded, or when the open submission is for the grant?
Uh, he told Steph that we were a year out from getting.
Okay, well, that answers my question right there.
A year out from getting approval on any grant?
He said a year out from getting any funds, I don't think that means approval, just what it would be drawn down.
We're, we're gonna move, yeah, for that. I'm not gonna wait a year, we've already, we've already put this off to the point, and if I'm not mistaken, from some information I got today.
Who's, uh, who's the fifty-seventh through? What's the name of the group?
M C A.
Both of them are, okay, so it's M C A also?
No, but the fifty-seventh's from Motorola.
Okay.
Forty-eight one forty-three.
So essentially, if we approve what the county provided, we're, we're, we're doing the Motorola and M C A?
Yes.
I like to put that in form of a motion there.
So a second?
A second.
Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. This time, I'm gonna call for a ten-minute recess. Fifteen minutes makes this.